Okay, it's 6:30 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. So this meeting this evening is a joint committee meeting, two committees in the same, two committees holding their meeting at the same evening. And the first half of the meeting will be basically Administration and Finance issues. And then at 7:00, I on the agenda, the issues dealing with Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities. And I'll turn the gavel over to Counselor Cameron when we get to 7:00 I on the agenda. And someplace during the meeting, we'll call a little short break. The closed session is going to be relatively short, so we may take the break at 7:00 H rather than take the break before the closed session, but we'll see how things go. So I'd like to welcome everyone here. I see we have quite a large number of staff this evening, largely because of the two different committees meeting on the same evening. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. The chair is looking for motion to approve the agenda as printed. I have it moved by Counselor Cameron and seconded by Deputy Mayor Deschamps. Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And item number three on the agenda is disclosure of community interest in the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening?
None.
No disclosures declared. And so item number four on the agenda is business arising from the previous committee of the whole meetings, if any. And we had one set of minutes, actually, I guess we got both sets of minutes or later, we just get one.
Oh, we have both.
So first we'll deal if there's any business arising from Administration-Finance meeting. And here, so I'm going to move then to the minutes of the Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities meeting. Are there any businesses arising from there? Is there any business arising from there other than my own?
I have, I have, I have a couple of them, Mr. Mayor.
I'll let you go first then.
Yes, on page three, I'm sorry, page four, right at the very top, installation, second sentence, installation of the new SNC docs. Has there been any, any word regarding those when they're going in?
I believe that Mr. Spencer met, not through the chair, Mr. Spencer met SNC on site last week, later in the week, and they are hoping to get them in this week.
Okay, thank you for that. And disposal of surplus goods, which is on page six, it's item I, disposal of surplus goods pickup truck. Has that been, has that been carried out and done?
I don't believe so. Mr. Grant was away on vacation for a couple of weeks and it was not a high priority for final year short staff.
Okay, it's still in our fleet at this, at this, at this moment. And the next one I have is regarding the fuel management report. There was a sentence or part of a sentence that says a more wholesome fuel management system is going to be, is going to be looked at. Is, is that ongoing?
Ongoing, yes, sir.
Thank you. And I guess the next one is for Mayor Sayo regarding discussion, release of land, if it's for land bank to farmers currently leasing land. Is there any news on that?
I'll report that during the mayor's report. I have a delegation with the minister.
That would be fine, thank you. That's all I have.
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Page two of eight, eight, page eight for you, Deputy Mayor. The Corey Fox, are we looking into that or are we just going to leave that? I thought it was quite interesting, Joe's, Joe was here and performed his, you know, brought it everywhere. Are we going to move on with that? Are we going to leave it as is or is there any talk to where we're going to go with that?
If I may, through the chair, the, as you'll see from our discussion item, many of our IT programs need to be looked at. We have to be sure that any new IT programs that we pick up will converse with our existing program. And we want to try to avoid the pitfall of getting software programs that aren't supported in the long term, which we are concerned about with startups. So we're reviewing that and we expect to have a report back to you.
Are you working with Mr. Baptiste? Like, is he coming down or no? He just presented to you a couple of times.
Yeah, made a presentation to staff and then asked if he could present counsel this week, of course.
Are we going to follow up with him? Corey Fox?
I don't believe so, not at this point. We, at first blush, it looks to us like a software system that may or may not be supportive in the medium term. We've struggled with our building permit software because of the same sort of thing, that it's a small, one or two man operation and it's hard to get support. So we would be careful about doing that. The Citywide program that we use already for asset management has a similar component to it, so I would prefer to stay with one software supplier and make sure we have the support that we need.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to have a few questions along that same line later on in the agenda, so I'll suspend my questions on that issue until we get into the action items. But I do have one question arising from the previous meeting, and that's on, and I hope I'm going to get this right. I've got it marked page five of six, so I have a feeling that it might be from the Administration and Finance Committee meeting. And I'm just going to see if I can find the issue. I don't have that. Yeah, there's only five pages, so maybe it's not, maybe it's five of eight. Yes, it is. And it was to do with the five-year energy plan update. And when we were looking at that energy plan update, we had some numbers for, I think it was 2018, but no sort of background information. And we had asked if it would be possible to see some of the more, in other words, some of the statistics going back further than just the two years that we were looking at. And so members suggested that staff provide another annual report to be used as a consumption and cost-saving comparator. And so we're wondering what had happened with getting the comparisons from the previous years.
It's still on the list of things to do, Mr. Mayor.
We were under the impression that they already had the information.
It's just a matter of finding time to look it up and get it into a report format and put it on an agenda. It's, it's there, it's just I haven't thought we did it yet.
Okay, I wasn't sure that it was coming back on agenda. I thought they were just going to circulate it to us.
I had thought to put it on an agenda, but as you wish.
Okay, okay, so that deals with business arising. The next item on the agenda is delegations and presentations, and I guess we have done this evening. And item number six is a discussion item, modernization fund ideas, and there is a sort of a briefing note here. Now, how did you want to handle this briefing note?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think council, committee and council has requested that staff bring forward their suggestions as to how the modernization fund might be utilized. We have discussed it extensively at senior management team, and basically what you have in front of you in this briefing note, while I have signed it, is a composite of the things that we think need to be addressed mostly, as you'll see, and it's just by coincidence mostly the improvements that we're suggesting are software and IT related. So as we go through this report, if there are particular parts that committee and council prefer that we not pursue, that's fine. We just need some direction on that. And it, I know it's a difficult thing to ask for decisions when there's no dollars behind it, to know how much these things cost, but it's really just exactly what it says. It's a discussion item. We're giving you the, our viewpoint of what needs to achieve efficiency.
Okay, well, since you opened that door, there's a couple of things that I'd like to look at a little bit more closely. And the first one is the municipal accounting software. And I believe that we use the system right now, and we've just introduced this system within the period of time since the new treasurer has been here. I can't remember the name of the system that we're using for accounting software.
The accounting software is Munisoft?
Yes, Munisoft.
And we've had that for many years. That is not something that was introduced when we, we've been on Munisoft for a number of years.
Well, that may be, but for example, we had some changes in the way we do our budgeting.
Some changes in reporting because the treasurer, Mrs. Stubbs, was able to use the software in such a way that she didn't have to take the numbers and put them on a spreadsheet. She was able to produce reports from within this, within the software. Our previous treasurer didn't have that, didn't have that map, did we not? But the software itself didn't change.
All right. So it says there are products available that will allow far better integration of items like facility bookings, license and fee permit collection, receivable billings and payroll, which will result in greater efficiency and less likelihood of errors and oversights. Now, that is still within the Munisoft system?
No, that would be, our intent there would be to look at procuring a new, more modern accounting software.
Okay, so would it replace Munisoft or be compatible with?
Replace.
So that means that we would have to learn our, our formatting all over again?
Well, potentially, although, I mean, I think that the more modern, I mean, one of the problems we have with Munisoft is that it is not a modern system. And so the more modern systems are, for the most part, more flexible when it comes to producing formatting and producing reports and those kinds of things. So I wouldn't anticipate that it would be a difficult thing to do in modern formats that are acceptable to council by using a different new accounting software. But, I mean, that would be part of going up to the market, finding out what's available and making sure that we get something that's useful.
Okay, so if we haven't done that, how do we know that such more modern systems are available?
Well, because the treasurer attends county treasurer's meetings and County Treasury Association meetings and there's presentations from various vendors and MCs and also those in other municipalities as well. When the treasurer worked in Astrodell, they had a different system than we have here, and she found it to be very much more flexible than this one and much easier to work with. So she has experience with other systems as well.
It's just that changing accounting systems is worrisome to me.
It's a very big challenge. I've been through it a couple of times since we came here.
Right. I know it creates problems for staff, but it creates problems for electric officials as well, because they're never sure of the, they're never, we're never sure of the transition, how things go in the transition phase. So what stage are these investigations at?
At the moment, they're just ideas on a piece of paper. They're, we have a few that are being pursued a little bit more. For example, the, the idea of agenda preparation being done more electronically, you know, those kinds of things. We will have, we will have recommendations coming forward and becoming one or two, but, you know, if, you know, committee wants to direct that we set the municipal accounting software idea aside, then we would pursue a module in the existing software without us doing e-billing. But again, here we're at counsel's question.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just going to state my preference right off at the beginning. I would prefer, because I know that Munisoft is a fairly robust system, it seems to be used by a number of municipalities, I believe. I don't know how many within our county use it, and maybe it would help if I could find that out. But I would prefer that we look at, at add-on modules that would add on to this system rather than going back to square one and trying to introduce an entirely new system. That's just a personal preference. But I really don't know what the opportunities are to add on, for example, a few minutes ago, Counselor Dillabow was raising the question of, of the QueryFox, which is basically a system to track complaints or requests from the public, distribute them to staff, and then find a mechanism to report back. And I think the thing that attracted me about QueryFox was the fact that council could monitor and see what was happening. And is there an opportunity for such a system that would work in conjunction with this or is it necessary that the two be compatible?
If you're asking, is it necessary for, for the customer reporting, customer service reporting and the accounting software to be compatible? We've gone quite a ways down that path with Citywide to make sure it's compatible, with Munisoft to make sure that we have a robust asset management. And customer service complaints and the data that we draw from that is tied to asset management through Citywide. So, I mean, they're, they're really not, QueryFox is a standalone system only intended to deal with customer service complaints. It, it has no other function. I asked Mr. Baptiste if it could be tied to the Citywide software, if it's used for our asset management, and he didn't know.
Okay, so, so at the present time then, our, our Citywide, which is our asset management plan, we do know that it has some opportunities to, to transfer information into Munisoft.
Other way, from Munisoft into, into Citywide.
Okay, all right, so we know there are opportunities there. So that says to me that, I mean, what I don't want is, I don't want the staff going off 15 different directions at once. I just prefer...
Me either.
You know, I would prefer that we sort of adopt what is a workable plan and an achievable plan rather than go off into the Netherlands seeing what might be available out in the universe.
Right, and so the treasurer has explored a little bit on that municipal accounting software. He's very intrigued by a company called Keystone, Keystone?
It's Keystone.
Which appears to, appears to answer all of, all of the questions that we have about how we can manage, better manage our accounting software. One of the concerns we have with Munisoft, and I've articulated that a little bit in the, in the report, is that they are very slow to get their modules up to date with the operating system when we're on a Windows operating system. So, in other words, we have not been able to upgrade to Windows 10 on our accounting computers because their software only operates on Windows 7. And that presents some security concerns. So one of the things we're hoping to do is to find a software, municipal software, accounting software package that will be more, stay more current. We were on, we were on DOS operating system with Munisoft until relatively recent, but it, and, and those computers just can't be, they're just not reliable when you're, when you're into that old operating system. So, I mean, that, that's our biggest concern with Munisoft, is just that they don't seem to stay with, in step, lockstep with Microsoft.
Okay, so then we get into another, which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Your operating systems.
I mean, are the other systems that we might look at based on Windows and are they going to migrate when Windows changes?
Absolutely, that's what we have to find out. And, I mean, that's, like anything, you go up to the market to see what's available, see the best practices in other municipalities, see what other folks are using and what their experience has been. We do know that there are several, you know, Munisoft clients in our, in our area, and there was a time when we first went on to Munisoft that they had a whole user group. They had meetings, quarterly meetings that the user group, that everybody would get together, but that's fallen by the wayside as they've lost clients too. They're a Regina based company and, you know, we've had, we've had good, we've had good support and then we've had times when we didn't have good support.
So are they aware of our concerns?
Oh, yes.
But when you start to lose clients, then you start to lose the ability to, to, to keep upgrading.
It's a very specialized software. I mean, is buying Munisoft software packages, account software packages, is in tens of thousands. It's not, it's, it's not, it's a very expensive...
Oh, I know that. And plus, not only the dollars are a big thing, it's the, it's the whole changeover that's an even more monstrous process. And other people should jump in here with their thoughts or their questions. I don't want to monopolize this part of the conversation, but it is something that's very concerning to me.
Could I just mention one item?
Yes.
It's, by the way, thank you, thank you for these ideas. It lays, with me, it lays quite a bit to rest. The one thing that I'm a little bit on the concern side is the e-bill, the e-tax. And I know, I'm quite sure you'll be able to get around the problem where people don't have computers, so they're going to want to stay with the old, the old system. And is Munisoft, is that their program adaptable for both ways?
We would have to buy a special module from Munisoft to allow for e-billing, but certainly it would never be intended that e-billing would substitute for that billing, which is being a matter of convenience for those folks who prefer.
Yeah, I like the idea.
We've been collecting email addresses from people over the last, over the last few months, I guess, 12 months maybe, from anybody who's interested, just to gauge interest on whether or not they'd like to handle it, so.
What are you finding?
There's a few.
Oh, I like the automatic deposit.
See, I like the idea, I, I personally, I don't like the idea of email bills, because I'll tell you why. The onus is on us to deliver, whereas if we're using the post office, the onus is on the post office to deliver. And I can, I can see all kinds of problems. Well, I didn't get that email. Matter of fact, we have heard that very recently. And it happens.
I sent it today once myself.
It happens. So now you have a person that's behind, and it's October, November. I'm not paying that interest, and now you get into a great huge thing.
We're having the same discussion with folks who insist that their post office didn't deliver either, but anyway.
Yeah, but the post office is the agent of the, of the sender. The one part that I did, I don't, are you...
Oh, yeah, thank you, yes.
The one part, the other part that I did want to talk about was just underneath that, where you talk about upgrades to computers. Because the way this, this talk originally started was that you had identified a number of actual computers within the organization that you felt needed to be replaced, and we felt that that was a good usage of money from the fund. So is there any, other than this, this paragraph, is there any update on replacing those X numbers of computers that were identified in the, in that initial briefing note?
We, we do intend to replace those ones that are what I would call critical. What we, what we wanted to try to avoid is replacing half the computers that we have and then having to replace that similar quantity five years from now when we don't have modernization funding. So we're trying to stage it a little bit. So I suspect that there is money in the budget for, for some computer replacements. We're gathering prices right now, and there may be a request to use some of the modernization fund to pump up that purchasing program. So where we've, we've had budgeted for, I think, five across the corporation, we may, we may look to council to use the modernization fund to, to allow us to purchase maybe eight.
Okay, now, do I, am I, am I correct in conceptualizing that as a sort of a standalone initiative?
Yeah, and that's why we want to stage it. We want to make sure that we don't, we don't get ourselves into a situation where we replace every computer we have and then five years from now.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I understand that.
So we'll, we'll stage that, but we're still gathering, costing and making sure we know which computers are in most dire need.
Okay. Anybody else have a question to jump in here, Counselor Hunter?
I don't have really much of a question, just a, I guess, kind of a seat, and I think, I think we've had Munisoft now for nine years, since we've, eight years anyway since we...
At least, yeah.
I know, and most businesses, you don't like to change accounting software too often, but most, the rule, rule of thumb that I've always lived by is about every five to six years, you upgrade your system. So I know it is a challenge to upgrade, but I think we are at the stage where if we don't, we've got funds now available that we can use to upgrade. If we don't soon upgrade, we're going to fall so far behind that it's not going to be just a minor change. Everything's going to be so drastic that I think we stand more chance of running into errors and stuff. The longer we wait down the long line, the more stuck we get in using the old type of system. I think we run into more of a chance of errors than we do if we start, keep, basically, modernizing. It's going to be a change, and there's some things different, but there's still going to be a lot of things that are the same. It's not going to be so drastic. And especially when, I'm not a real computer expert by any, any means, but, but I know I just changed a computer at home and there's just so much, takes a few days to get used to using the system on it, but it's just so much faster and so much more efficient than my other computer, but it's only five years old, so.
You know, there's a difference between the hardware and the software though.
And you're talking software on the computer too, there's just a difference in the, in the software on it, but do you think it's something we should be looking at?
Okay, anybody else jumping in here? I noticed that there's a few up in the, on the third page, there's a few comments with regard to hardware, software operates at the wastewater treatment plant on the SCADA system, replacement of three existing Rockwell SLC five programmological controls, which are obsolete, which that says to me that it's no, they're no longer supported. I don't know whether it means anything more than that. And migrate to PLCs, is that, again, programmological computer, logical controls to existing Foxborough DCS system is, so is that a, a kind of a standalone fix that, that could be instituted relatively quickly or, as, again, is a standalone change?
I believe so. I would defer to Mr. Grant or or Mr. Schon, for further detail on that, but I do know that that is fairly expensive. That's a fairly expensive schedule. I believe we're into six figures for that, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it was 122,000.
Six figures?
Yeah, a little over 100,000.
122,000, I believe.
122?
I believe that's what it was.
Okay, so, do you modify?
No, please, go ahead.
So tell me a little bit more about the change, the change about, and what would be involved in that change about?
Like I tell you, that the reason we changed the filter system in the water treatment plant is because it had SLIC 50 processors in it. The SLIC 50 that runs the eight, or sorry, the SPRs, the treatment process at the wastewater treatment plant, I think it has a 32-bit system, which is kind of like a Tandy or Commodore 64 strength. So it has very basic ability for adjustments and so forth. The Foxborough system has a lot more room for expandability and changing screens and functionality, because the, I'm not sure what the processor capability is, but it's way above, you know, like a 32-bit.
So is this just a concept at this point in time or is this something that's being actively pursued?
We have asked Foxborough Schneider to give us a quote, and that's what, that's coming from, basically, they looked at the system, worked out a plan on how to go about changing it over. And basically, it would be switching to, and that would integrate it into the regular SCADA system that we use to run the water treatment plant, basically. So then it's expandable as, as opposed for sort of one segment being able to just command that way. It can be branched. I don't know if that makes sense, but it, it gives you a lot more control on the system.
So does that improve our efficiency and operations on a go-forward basis?
It will, and also the reliability, which is the big thing, because you can't get SLIC 50 PLCs anymore. If you buy them, it's on eBay or something. They don't, they're not making them, so. We ended up, a few years back, when... not making them. So we ended up, a few years back, with the, with the system crashing, had high flows, and the system, because it's only 36-bit, it was overwhelmed, and it crashed the system, and we had to get an ICI in to reprogram it. Fortunately, they had a program. We ended up having a spare SLIC, which was a used one. The original SLIC they pulled out was, was no good. So we got that programmed and threw them via stored program on stick, and basically got the system up and running again. So, so we're in that position where we're getting, it's going to be difficult to deal with control-type crashes moving forward, because they're obsolete. They just don't make them anymore.
Okay, so then to the CAO. So this has obviously been discussed at the management meetings. To the CAO, does the report that I just heard, and the rationale that I just heard, and the briefing note that I've got in front of me, does this qualify under the modernization fund?
Oh, I can get that, yeah.
Okay, so there would be no reason to hesitate on this, then. It would be a sign of, it would be a tangible move forward. Okay. It's just that I'm looking, as we've talked about it many times, what is the, what is the easily achievable wins here? And I'm seeing and I'm hearing that this is possibly one of them. So I'm encouraged by that. I would encourage you to, to investigate further, and it would be something that might be accomplished within this calendar year, maybe. Again, nobody else jumping in here?
Well, I have a couple of comments. Like, I found that there was a lot of good, I, I think the seeds of a lot of good stuff are in here. The other thing that comes to my mind is that we can't forget the mandate. The mandate was to improve efficiency of delivery of services to our client base, if you like. So I think the ones that, that look like they're possibilities, we have to test against that criteria. And they may make our job easier, but it doesn't necessarily improve something deliverable to our client base. So I think, I'm just reminding, I guess, that we have to keep that criteria front and foremost.
Right, and, and, and that's one of the reasons that I asked the last two questions, because it seems to me that if we remove uncertainty for the potentiality for failure, that's an improvement of service. And that's why I asked those last two questions, because I think that is the test, and that should always be the task. And, and I look at it from the point of view of, if a system fails, and it's down for two or three or four days because it's old and outdated, and we haven't been able to, to replace it, then, then we're improving our service.
I think that, I'm surprised that this Munisoft system is lagging Microsoft so dramatically. Because most, I don't know the company or anything about them really, but most companies that are selling services, software services, have in-house technicians who are trained by Microsoft to integrate new software into the, into their modules, their program modules. Now, if Munisoft is, doesn't want to spend the money on hiring these guys who are high-priced people, then they create a problem for themselves, and they suffer from it. So like, Windows 10's been out for ages. I, I can't believe that they're not capable of, you know, handling that. Now, I do know, I'm not a Microsoft user personally, but I do know that these generators, these program, these software operating systems, sometimes have proprietary issues that are within the software. And they don't want to release certain stuff to, to users. So I don't know if there's a problem there or not, but I definitely think it needs to be looked at in really close detail. You have, I'm astounded here that that's.
So what, so, and I agree with you. I mean, I can't believe it either. So what does, what does Munisoft have to say when you, when they're questioned about why they haven't upgraded to the Windows 10? What do they have to, in response to that?
And the response is almost inevitably that they're working on it, that they are working to get their software up to where it needs to be in order to integrate successfully with Windows 10. And one of the other things we struggle with a little bit with Microsoft products is, is they come out with things like Windows 8, which actually doesn't work when no one installs.
That's right.
So the.
I jumped that one.
Yeah. So the, the software creators, the Munisofts of the world, hesitate a little bit when there's a new operating system, because they don't want to create one that is the operating system that no one's going to use.
And, and you know, and I can understand that, except Windows 10 is, is proven, it's a proven product, and it's widely distributed, and, and I haven't heard any talk of it being upgraded or replaced.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, in the intervening period of time between seven and 10, and I realize eight was a misstep on their part, I mean, Munisoft should have been able to realize that by now, Windows 10 is a surviving system.
Oh, and they.
And a supporting system.
And they have, they have upgraded their software now to the point where we can't start putting Windows 10 on all of our computers, but it's all just reasonable.
Okay, well, I don't want to prolong this anymore. This has been a good discussion for me. I appreciate the briefing note. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. So I'm at item number seven A on the agenda, which is the second quarter building report update. And we did get the report on our desk tonight as we came in. And I, I'm just going to make notice here, notice the problem that we saw on the first quarter report, which was the fact that industrial and agriculture seem to be kind of melded together under the industrial column. That still has not been sorted out, but it seems to now be sorted out. Am I correct in saying that it is sorted out for the second quarter? Or do the numbers that I see under the agricultural column in the second quarter, are they representative of both first and second quarters?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so, all I'm missing is the first quarter numbers under the agriculture column.
And there were, there were none.
Well, there were none?
No.
Okay, so that explains why they're not there. I thought it was something to do with a problem preparing the report or something.
It was, but it was for the second quarter, Mr. Mayor. It was the second quarter report that was problematic, and you saw that in July, so it's bringing this forward with a correction. So it's still the second quarter.
Okay. All right, so overall, what we're seeing is, and I'm just looking now, and I know that this is probably not a fair look, but if I go to the far right, I've got total project values for the quarter of 1.4 million, and compared with, is this a legitimate comparison? With 3.8 for the, for the previous year, is that legitimate? And then from a year-to-date point of view, I've got 2.4 a year-to-date, with what I take to be 4.5 a year-to-date last year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, in other words, we're not quite as, there's not as much project work happening this year as there was last year. Housing, housing residential is still three this year, compared to what, seven last year. Is there anything else that anybody else would like to highlight here or talk to? Okay, I'll ask the leading question, then. What's on the horizon here for the third quarter? We're into the third quarter now. How is the third quarter developing?
All right, so thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I think what you'll see in the third quarter, I know that in terms of the housing, there were some more permits issued in July, so that will bump those numbers up more in line with what you'll see from the second quarter of 2018. If you look at the third quarter of 2018, the housing dropped down a bit, so I think you'll see after the third quarter, the numbers might be more in line with 2018.
Okay. And what about other, other commercial, industrial, how's that shaping up?
I, I would say it's, it's down, obviously. There are a couple big projects that may not be reflected on here. One, because there is partial permits issued, so until a full permit is issued, it doesn't get reflected in the report. And there is one other, I guess fairly large project, where the permit hasn't been issued yet, and we're still working through the, the approval process.
Okay, anybody else got any questions here? If not, if not, we're going to move on. Okay, just, just a quick question that somebody asked earlier this evening. Something like Hoy Street, is that one residential or two residential?
Hoy Street would be two.
That's a two residential. So is that permit for Hoy Street, is that included in the Q2 numbers, or is that a Q3 number?
No, that would be in the second quarter numbers, Mr. Mayor.
It is already included in the three, then?
Yes.
Okay. So really, when you come right down to it, in the first half, we've only had two building starts, three residential units, two building starts. Pretty thin for our township, really. We haven't seen that for some period of time. Okay, anybody else? If not, moving on. And then we're at 7B, which is the second quarter bylaw report. And just let somebody else jump in here before I make my comments here.
Can I speak, Mr. Mayor? Just, I guess I'm just looking for some, in the area of parking infractions, a total of 24 tickets were issued during this quarter. What would we classify as a parking infraction?
Well, the parking bylaw has several ticketable offenses listed in the set fine schedule.
Speeding certainly isn't one of them.
No, we don't enforce highway traffic.
So we're coming down to parking, illegal parking, I guess, parking on the wrong side of the road?
Yes. And probably in the second Q2, it would have been April, May, June, probably wouldn't have been leaking control. It should be more parking on the lawns, parking on the boulevard.
Yeah, and I, and I was, I was somewhat always under the impression that parking violations were just that, not parking on the wrong side of the road, or parking in front of somebody's driveway, or something like this. This isn't, this isn't a Toronto or Montreal. This is Edwardsburg, Cardinal, for goodness sakes.
And council would like to revisit the parking bylaw, remove some of that stuff. That would be okay.
Well, and I, and I know, and to be quite truthful, I know the parking bylaw very well, because I wrote it. And, and to be quite truthful, the intent of that, of the parking was certainly not parking in the wrong direction, or parking from somebody's driveway. I'll, I'll tell you that right now. But, but anyway, anyway, that's, that's the only, and, and to be quite truthful, I think this is a somewhat a poor report. I would like to see something in the, in the way of a spreadsheet where it outlines so many animals, so many parking, and, 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 because we used to get that type of, type of, of report. And I just don't know, this, this really, it does tell me things, but I think a spreadsheet type would be a little bit more comfortable for me to, to go along with. So just for consideration.
No, I appreciate that, Councilor. And we have certainly another quarterly report's always provided a spreadsheet of sorts, but we're trying to find a way to make that spreadsheet be produced from Citywide. And what we found when we did produce the spreadsheet from Citywide is that the bylaw officer hasn't entered everything that he's done. So, for example, in this written report, we say that we had 17 concerns reporting, reported regarding animals, but our citywide service complaint tracking doesn't show back any. So we have to go back and say, okay, what have you not entered? So we'll make sure that we're getting everything, not only into John's notebook, but also into our, into our complaint action software.
Thank you for that. I'll, I'll, I'll just, you have my concerns, I'll just leave that with you. Thank you.
Anybody else jumping in here? Councilor Hunter?
I have basically the same, kind of same concerns, Councilor Cameron, that we have 17 animals reported. Very vague, if not, we had complaints about parking dogs, or we had animals running loose, or animals on the road, or, or something. I think we need a little better description of exactly what he's trying to enforce. And I had the same concern, because I've had a complaint about parking ticket being issued, a car being parked the wrong, wrong, facing in the wrong, wrong direction. And it was put to me that with the amount of yards infraction we have here, his time might better be spent enforcing the yards clean up than worrying about a car being parked the wrong direction on, on a street. So I would like to see a little more emphasis on his 10 hours, or whatever it is, we're, got him booked in for now, spent trying to get some of our yards finished cleaning up, and, and maybe quit having so nice a chot, but want a little bit more enforcement in cleaning them up.
Anybody else jumping in here?
Mr. Mayor, just curious, how many of the, of these parking tickets were actually paid?
Does, do we have a mechanism to track payment?
Yeah, I don't, I can answer your question to the exact, that's exactly specifically. But yes, we get, we get pretty good, surprisingly, to me, surprisingly good payments on our thing.
Well, we do track.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they're tracked through the POA if they don't get.
Yes, I know they track at POA, but I'm just wondering if we track.
Oh, we do, because we have to let the MPO know about it. There's a whole reporting mechanism around parking payments.
Okay, so that answers that. Anybody else? Okay, well, just before we go on, I, I want to echo the concerns of Councilor Cameron and Councilor Hunter. I, I do not regard this as a report. And if there is a problem migrating statistics from the system onto the previous report sheet that we're used to seeing, and the system isn't capable of doing the migration, then there's the old-fashioned way, by hand.
Yes, absolutely.
And that can be done. And to my way of thinking, this is not a report, it's an excuse for a report. And I'm just not comfortable with it. And I'm going to echo Councilor Hunter's comments as well. To issue 24 tickets, and I got a number of calls about parked the wrong way, and the same comment. I mean, I can drive into township, and I can find a dozen vehicles that are derelict vehicles, not current year plates. Some of them noticeably in your face. Others, backyard, side yards, but still derelict vehicles. And I don't have a single thing here that's got to do with the yards bylaw enforcement. And to me, that's where I think the effort should be, is on yards bylaw enforcement. We know that the public supports that, and that's where, and I'll just re-echo the, the comments of the previous two speakers, and say that I'm disappointed here. So with those comments, I'm going to move on to item number seven C, bylaw enforcement policy. And seven C, I understand it's a draft recommended enforcement policy. And I'll open the floor for discussion on this policy.
Could I, could I jump in, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I, when I got this, I, I, I certainly read through it, and in the short period of time. in the short period of time, um, that we have it, the only, the only thing that, uh, that I want to mention tonight is, uh, the recommendation reads, that committee recommend that A, not this, but A, bylaw enforcement policy is to be adopted by council. So what you're saying here is you're leaving this up to council to go through it, finalize it, fine tune it, tweak it, and bring it back. Is, is that what the recommendation is actually saying?
Well, yes, it, it certainly, if, if I may through the chair, it certainly is not our intent that this be adopted just the way it is. We certainly will expect council to have some suggestive changes and we can discuss that tonight or bring it forward at another meeting for further discussion.
Well, I just, I, I'd just like to see, I, uh, my, personally myself, I just need more time to go through this, analyze it and, and do the best, uh, you know, twenty-four hours is, is, to me, ju, I, I just can't do that that quickly. And, and there are some, there, I have, I have several areas marked and, uh, one of the, one of my major concerns here is on the chart with the, uh, with the timeframe. Response, response time, a threat to personal safety is imminent and it's gonna take two days? I have, I got a problem with that.
Yeah.
And then a threat to property which may affect personal safety, four days? Well, anyway, this, I just have to go through this on a little more, a little more diligently than, uh, than I've been able to do it. And I, I certainly will be wanting to see this brought back. That's, that's all.
Count, uh, Mr. Draper?
Just one question. I know one time we used to use cameras a lot, I know you keep a cell phone. But can you download the cell phone into photos into the existing system that we have that we need to?
Okay, that's all I have.
Other speakers? Okay, um, I'm gonna jump in first, did you want to?
Yeah, I can go after you, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, I just, in reading through, there's no, uh, definition of what compliance or, or full compliance, uh, is. So, so when we get a yards complaint, um, does full compliance apply equally to every property? Or, or compliance, um, come equally for, for every property? And, and it's not listed in definitions and for me, uh, reading through here, it's all about compliance. And, and I don't know what compliance is, so. Just a comment.
So that would, looking for definitions, is what you're saying? Okay, um, so I'm gonna make a couple of comments. So first of all, under section three, just, and I'm, I'm very happy to hear that we're not being asked to approve this tonight and that we will be seeing it come back at a previous meeting. And I would suggest that, uh, when we come to the conclusion of this discussion, that the recommendation come forward, that this, this come back to another meeting for a second review. So, under the section on, uh, attire, I think one thing, must wear a township shirt and/or a jacket, but that's a small point. I'm looking at things that I find really worrisome though. A page here, Mr. Mayor? Yes, I'm gonna get there. It's five of ten. And on five of ten, I have a number of problems. All bylaw complaints from the public staff and members of council shall be made in writing by the complainant to the, on the prescribed form. With the exception of township staff, all complainants must live on their own property in the township of Edversburg-Curtain. Now, I'm assuming that that includes council as well. Most of the councillors, well, I guess all current council does live in the township. And I like the idea that the complaint has to come from within the township. Don't like the idea that as a, as a staff, as, as an elected councillor, I have to reduce the complaint that's been relayed to me by a, by a member of the public. That I have to be the one that sits down and writes it out. I don't think that's my job, I think my job is to report it. Uh, so I have a, I, I regard that as somewhat offensive. But worse than that, on section eight point four, pursuant to eight point one of this policy, once a complaint has been filed, other than acknowledgement of receipt of the complainant, no follow-up involvement, information or correspondence regarding the complaint shall be provided to the complainant as the process is protected by the da-da-da-da-da. I think that's really offensive, not just to me as a mayor and elected official, but it's also offensive to our, to our taxpayers that take the time to reduce a complaint in writing. And we're promising them here, you put it in writing, but we're not gonna tell you anything about what we've done. That's extremely offensive. And not only is it offensive, it's fully, it's fully contradictory of what I read in nine point two. In nine point two, if at the end of the investigation, the officer has found that no bylaw contravention has been made, he or she will contact the complaint to inform law of the findings. Well, that's not what eight point four says, says not gonna get back to you at all. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of things that can be cleaned up here. And I'd like to see a, another draft of this one, that's for sure. And I'm looking now at eight point five, which has already been, uh, some discussion about the response times in two and four days. My question is, how do we, as elected representatives of the people, elected representatives of the people, put at this table to monitor activity? How do we monitor responses? What is the procedure in here that gives us, as elected officials, an opportunity to not only know that the complaint has been acted upon, but how it was acted upon and what results were achieved? So those are the kind of things that I'm looking for when I see the next, uh, the next draft. And I'm not gonna call for a recommendation, for a, for a mover and a seconder of this recommendation, but I would like to hear a recommendation that this be brought forward in a revised version at the next meeting. Someone make that recommendation, please.
I would do that.
Councillor Cameron, is there a seconder for that recommendation? Deputy Mayor Deshaun. Those in favor?
Aye.
That's carried, we'll see it again, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I, I just, a lot of the comments come back to, to follow up and communication with, with residents, constituents, so to be it. Uh, and going back to the software discussion before, that was one of the great things about, uh, Queryfox. Does the, does the mini soft have, have a component that could deliver upon that? What everybody's having an issue with?
Uh, it's, it's the Citywide side that we use for this, but, um, actually, that's, to be honest with you, that's something we're still working through internally because I don't feel that I get enough response from the Citywide program. So we're working with those, uh, with PSD, who is the company that produces Citywide, to show us how we can get the process set up so that we get better reporting back. It's not great now, it's not.
It seems like, or at least when Mr. Baptista made that presentation, that that was one of the most, like, the best parts of that whole program was, was for us and for residents that, that had made complaints, that they didn't just get lost, you know, in the fourth drawer of somebody's filing cabinet, that they actually saw it on, on a screen and could actually follow it up and even see the escalation of it if it, if it wasn't being dealt with. And listening to, uh, the concerns that, that others have, uh, the relevancy of that software seems to be very, you know, upfront.
No, and, and I don't disagree with you, that was one of the things about that, that, that really intrigued me as well. Um, but I, I believe we can get there through Citywide, we just need to make sure our process mapping is done correctly so that the people who lodge the complaint get informed when something happens. Right now, for example, if I put in a service, someone, one of, one of the council members calls me and says there's, you know, something going on, I enter the service request, it goes through the process, it goes to the bylaw enforcement officer, that's a clean yard complaint, Kevin, uh, hears about it as well. Uh, but unless I go and look a few days later, I don't get told that the bylaw officer has seen it or that he's acted on it. So, so that's a process map that needs to be done. And, and it will come, but, but it, it does take some significant amount of time spent making sure that the program is there.
Yeah. Um, and, and that seemed, again, going back to, to Queryfox, that, that really seemed, especially with, with what he described as, as A I, artificial intelligence, that it began a learning process to simplify that, that process. And the, the one thing for sure that I liked about that versus what I'm hearing is that I have access to that the same way a resident has access to that. Other than, uh, now it seems that we're on, on an email chain that we sometimes get connected to or don't get connected to and, and it's a little harder, harder to follow versus, versus touching a button, saying, okay, that is being dealt with, not be telling.
Yeah, and, and I, I couldn't agree with you more, Deputy Mayor Deshaun, it's, it's, uh, it's progress. And I, I guess if, if I can caution you, there are a dozen other Queryfoxes out there.
Sure.
And, uh, and certainly if we can't make Citywide work, we'll look for something else that will work. But we believe that the module we have through Citywide will get there eventually. It's just, it's like any computer program. The data coming out is only as good as the data going in and we have to make sure that we're doing that. Even Queryfox won't produce something unless you put the information in there first of all. So we're, we're working through it and it, it is just one of the things.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Um, so now I'm on item seven D, which is the tax arrears update.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Clerk advises me that we, we didn't call the vote on the, uh,
Oh, sorry. I thought I did. Those in favor? Carried, maybe I just didn't clarify. Okay, so, um, so now we're on the issue of tax, total tax receivables. And I must say that we seem to be in much better shape than some of our neighbors, but that's not a good comparison.
Yes, it is.
I, I, I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at the, uh, at the, at the graph and, uh, I think we're in good shape and I think it was a job well done. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, twenty eighteen has come down considerable from twenty seventeen's. And, um, and of course, now that the August bills have gone out, they'll go back, it'll go back up again. And so the next report that we receive will, will give us, but I particularly like the idea now that we're following up with people. Uh, it takes, um, it, it takes only two years now to end up in tax arrears, which I think is a great uh, improvement from the, from the province that's given us just two years. Uh, and, uh, I'm looking at the second last paragraph of the briefing note. In accordance with the credit inflections policy, staff will mail out letters in September to any property owners that would potentially have two years of taxes owing at the end of twenty nineteen. And the letters will advise that the tax account will be eligible for tax registration if the arrears are not cleared by the end of the year. And I think that that's a great step, we've been doing that, I think, have we not?
Yes.
And I think that's a great step forward, so. Now, the interesting thing here is the last, uh, paragraph, I'm just gonna mention this. Um, the types of payments that are made electronically. So sixteen point seven percent on a pre-authorized payment plans, twenty point cent, twenty percent through the mortgage company, and three point six percent on internet banking payments, uh, where we get fif, around fifty thousand a month. And so a new entrance to the township says, says to me, can I make payments by internet against my tax account? Oh, he can.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Uh, he says, I've been all over your website, I can't find where I can make payments, like three or four hundred dollars a month.
It's, it's just if he's not on the pre-authorized payment plan, we have to charge interest. If he signs up for our pre-authorized payment plan, and I believe the form is on our website, then, uh, we don't charge any interest.
Okay, so he, 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 it appeared that he didn't really wanna be on a prepayment plan, but what he wanted to be able to do was just, oh, I got four hundred dollars, I'll put it on my tax account.
And he, he can do that through his banking application? He doesn't need our cooperation to do that, he can just go to his, on his online banking and set up the township as a, as a payment and pay us whenever he likes. But he's gonna incur some interest charges.
But he only incurs interest if he goes past the due dates.
That's right.
Yeah, so if he's made four or five payments against the march one, and as long as he meets his march, he takes all those other payments as credited on account, right? They'll show as credited as what kind of account. Okay, so that's, I'm, I'm very, now, why, why can't he find that?
It, it, it's not something he needs to do with us, he needs to do that with his banking app. He needs to go to, onto his, his online banking.
Well, he doesn't want it withdrawn.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, he has to go tell his bank to send us the money, we, we don't have anything to do with it.
He sets it up on its own.
Oh, I see, so he, he, okay, I, okay, maybe I understood.
Number appears in, uh, internet banking.
Okay, I got you, okay. All right, now, did, did the treasurer, did the, through the C E O, did the treasurer wanna say more about this? I mean, it's a good report, I don't know if we need to tear it apart. Well, I better remember that, no, there, tearing apart can be done in a good sense as well as in a bad sense. All it means is we can make compliments as well as criticisms, our job is to do both.
Mr. Mayor?
That's why we can pay the big money, by the way.
I just have one question for Mal.
Go ahead, councillor.
Um, now, it says here, December thirty first, uh, what is that, here, page two oh two, page thirty one, uh, that, uh, it said December thirty, thirty first, two eighteen, there's a total of ninety-three properties had balanced tax arrears over two years. Currently, we have thirty-two, so you, is that a hundred and twenty-five total we're gonna have?
No.
Over two years?
We've reduced the amount from ninety-three down to thirty-two.
Down to thirty-two?
Yes.
Oh, jeez, that's a real good report. Your hair looks really good tonight. Thank you, Mal.
Okay, good. Now, that's interesting though, because that still leaves thirty-two properties that have a balance of tax arrears over two years. So out of the thirty-two, there's two of them closing, uh, sometime this month, are there not?
Next month.
When do the other thirty go into, uh, registration or?
Uh, through the chair, we have several, um, properties with real tax, so they have to have a year to pay. Um, and we put them in, uh, this, oh, in twenty eighteen, so they have to, they have, later in twenty eighteen, so they have a whole year to, to file that off. So they are staggered, some of them will come up various points throughout the year, depending on when we enroll them. Um, and, uh, some of them have set up in a pre-authorized payment plan, so we have held their accounting, um, on, on hold at real tax, as long as they're paying us on a pre-authorized amount, so that they're clearing that arrears. You know, so there's, there's several different options for people. Um, there are still probably at least eight or ten that are going to, if they don't pay within the year, we'll be, we'll be adding them to a tax sale as well before the year ends out.
So we are working with them.
We are trying to work with them, for sure.
Okay, so then, we, we've got quite a number then that have agreements with us.
Yes.
And, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be asking my old question, are all of the agreements current?
Yes, yes. If they're not current, then we take the, the, uh, account off of hold and it proceeds through the process.
Okay. All right, any other questions here? Councillor Hunter?
Uh, one of the big drops, uh, from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen in the balance of taxes over there on your graph there, I assume one of the things that made the big drop go up is the money we collect from the seven thirty, which against the tax years that showed such a dramatic drop there too.
Yeah, yeah, you're correct.
And on the number of houses, uh, or residents that are over two, two years, I think, uh, command their staff and their financial department are getting it down because they know on the number of years I saw here, that's, I think, one of, probably one of the lowest numbers that we've ever hit. Right on there, yeah. At one point, we had a very shit number of them there until we jumped our interest rate way up, quite a number of years ago and then I'll. quite a number of years ago, and then people kept using this as a bank and paying. But I think it needs to be commended, as our mayor stated, when you see some of our neighbors' reports that are in the paper, the amount of money outstanding debts are running down. The park is doing pretty good here, so...
Yep. We'll let the little silence. Okay, so I'm on to, I'm on to seven E, which is the cyber liability insurance coverage. Now, there is a briefing note passed into this report with recommendation. And I know from the number of media reports that I've heard recently, I don't need to spend a great deal of time on the briefing note. If anybody has any questions, I'll provide an opportunity, but I am looking for a mover and a seconder to action the recommendation. I have a mover, Counselor Cameron.
Secondary.
I have a seconder, Counselor Dillabaw. A question from Counselor Cameron, go ahead.
This, in a nutshell, this is just something to do with ransom protection, is that correct?
And that's one of the things that they need to protect against. The other thing they offer is IT services in the case where you do get hacked or where you have some of your private information gets accidentally released. They will send their experts in to help you get through that process and make sure that you follow all the appropriate steps.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk.
That's good. Counselor Hunter.
I'm fully in favor of this. I just wondered, with the cyber insurance listed in the back, there's three different options. Which option is it worth taking?
Option one.
Option one.
The others? Okay, I'm about to call a question on the recommendation. Those in favor of the recommendation? Motion is carried, thank you. And now I'm on the credit card policy amendment, seven F. And again, this briefing note has a recommendation attached to it, following up on a comment from the auditors during the auditors' report, and a recommendation to revise our corporate credit card policy. Discussion, if any? Looking for a mover and a seconder to action the recommendation. Counselor Hunter, moving. And do I have a seconder? Okay, I'll take Mr. Robertson. And any further discussion on the recommendation? Hearing none, those in favor? Motion is carried. And so I'm turning now then to service delivery review, the request for proposal results of seven G. And again, the briefing note has a recommendation, and you can see the way that the various proposals were evaluated and the criteria that were used. The only thing I haven't seen is the actual RFP document, to know what they're asking for. But I understand, and just correct me if I'm right or wrong here, whoever gets this contract is going to be interviewing the council as well, right?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. And now you seem to, have we seen the actual document?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I sent it out to council members in June, soon after the recommendation to move forward with this.
Okay, so beyond my memory's term.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, discussion, if any? Looking for a mover and a seconder to action the recommendation. So I'll take mover as Counselor, or Mr. Bradley, please. Is there a seconder? Counselor Hunter. Deputy Mayor, you want in here?
Yeah, just, I know when we had the 17 people here, there was a, it seemed to be a good flavor for a combined service delivery review in addition to individual ones. Is that still, is that still a possibility, is that still a plan, is that...
It's certainly a possibility. I'm not sure I'd call it, go for far as to call it a plan yet, but certainly it's a possibility. You know, by the time that idea, the try here, the simple service delivery review came out, this actually had already been issued, so...
Yes, we indicated a little ahead, but has it been talked with us, about at the CIO level?
Briefly, we haven't spent a lot of time on it. It's been one of those things that we sort of agree, in general terms, that we want to make sure our own houses are in order to take a look at this.
Just to comment again, so it takes me back to the discussion item to modernization fund ideas. And it's like now we're gonna have three very, you know, different reports that are all going to, you know, kind of put together a good staff, you know, delivery service review already. Now we're going to have somebody do a full, assuming a full one, for the entire township, and then we're going to have a third one done to review all, like, all three together, to ways that we can find it. And I don't know, it almost like we should wait until all of these reports are done before we start actually buying software, replacing computers, and doing all that. If, I don't know, it just seems like we should wait for all this information, find our way through this mass of information we're compiling, and then make, then actually follow what our consultants tell us to do if we're gonna spend $61,000 plus whatever we commit to in a tri-ministerial amount as well. We're spending an awful lot of money. I mean, that's over 10% of, 12% of our full amount of our municipal modernization money right there.
And to that point, if I may, Mr. Mayor, in the discussion item, I did make note of that, that we may want to, through the mayor, that we may want to see the results of this and take that into consideration as far as what we spend money on. It's not an infinite amount of money. So, but I honestly don't, I don't believe that this review will look at any IT. I believe that this review will simply look at whether or not we've put people in and the infrastructure to continue to deliver the services that we do.
I think the other thing that came out during that meeting of the three councils is that we seem to be moving at three different rates of speed, if I could call it that. We seem to be moving forward a little bit more aggressively and a little bit faster. And I depend on your reports from the CIO meetings to kind of keep us surprised of where the other two are moving on the map. And there has not yet been a call for the mayors and the CAOs to meet.
No, and I'll be honest with you, the few things that we have started to tackle and have required somebody to take a leadership role in ball rolling, and that has typically been at risk for current.
Yeah.
If I may, again, go ahead through the chair. So going back to that again, so you don't believe that they're going to review IT through this, but would it not make sense, though, that that happens?
Oh, it can.
I mean, if your entire report back was that you recognize that all of our IT needs to be, like, everywhere needs to be done, shouldn't the consultant be actually looking at that, saying, you know...
I certainly hope so. My hope is that the consultant will find things that we didn't think of, that, you know, there are areas for improvement in service delivery that we're, you know, what it's like when you get working away in a forest and you stop seeing the forest because you're so busy worrying about the trees. I'm hoping that the consultant will come up with a couple of new things that we can be looking at.
In the meantime, that initial briefing note that we talked about in the beginning sort of provides a kind of a fodder for the work. Go ahead.
Yeah, and my last sort of comment, and it was what, when this original discussion happened and why I voted against, was that just felt without very precision guidance when it came to a consultant's report, we're gonna need a consultant to go through the consultant report that we get, and it won't have, you know, a top five attached to a dollar value where we can make, say, things and that sort of thing that will eat up a good portion of the $500,000 with consultants consulting consultants, and that is a fear for me.
I believe your fears are ungrounded. Certainly, my experience, and I'm gonna go to the delivery of our economic development strategy document, for example. That consultant came to us back in 2011 or 2012 with the first draft and said, here you go. And we read it and said, no, that does not help us. We need top 10 action items that we can do. So, I mean, I'm quite prepared to carry on with that strategy. We're dealing with consultants. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of consultants' reports that aren't useful.
Exactly, and we make, they end up being what we, they end up being the product of our direction.
Yep, and the RFP that we issued was pretty specific.
It was very specific, yeah. And very broad as well. So, okay, just so for my own ignorance then, I don't want to take up too much time, but when that comes back, we don't have, they'll give us the report, we read through the report. We don't like what we read, we give it back to them, no further cost. They rewrite, they give us, you know, upon whatever direction we give them, much...
Yep, and we always get a draft report.
Anything, questions?
I think basically that's why, you know, the reports that I've dealt with over the years, that's why we pay such a cost for them, because some of them, I know some reports we've had over the years, we've sent them out four or five times to them. And it's always, they gotta do it within that money, so you get a lot of shots at the consultants to give what you want to, want to.
Provide a useful document.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? I have a recommendation on the floor, moved by Bradley, second by Counselor Hunter. About to call a question on the recommendation. In favor? Okay, the motion, the recommendation is carried. And so now I have purchase of property from Greenion, seven H. And this is that little piece of a parking lot on the north side of Jones Street, I think it is, across from the Benson School. And they're prepared to sell it and sell off things we should buy, I do too. Discussion, if any?
Can I jump in, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm all for, I will support the recommendation to buy it. However, I will not support the purchase being funded out of the Cardinal Hydro Reserve. When the purchase, when the, when the property was sold to whoever it was sold to, the school board or whatever, or whatever we did with it, there was no monies coming into the Reno St. Lawrence coppers from that. I think the township should find a way to purchase it other than the Reno St. Lawrence Fund or Cardinal Hydro Fund. What is the purpose of buying this?
I'd like to know.
Essentially, as I said in my briefing note, there's a couple of, there was a couple of factors that pointed me in this direction. One is that the Greenion applied to put a fence around it.
Correct.
Or six, whatever, put a chain link fence around it, which I don't think is very attractive in residential area. The other, the other end of it is that there is a parking problem. You could potentially make that available, take that space available for off-street parking for places that don't have any on-site parking. And, you know, we'll have to talk about how we're gonna do that. Are we just gonna have a free draw, or are we gonna rent the spaces to people? How are we gonna do it? But certainly, I think that's, that was my, the property simply as a parking.
Do we know how many spaces are actually there?
I drove by today, it looked to me like about 12.
Yeah, and I'll concede to that, I think you're very, very close. And yes, I do know that there is a particular problem in certain areas of the village. But now, just to back up a little bit, the money from the Cardinal Hydro Fund is to be used by the people of Cardinal only, not for the other township. We've already supplied $17,500 for the steps in the pool at Cardinal, which that pool is used by everyone, by the way, not just from the village of Cardinal. So I think that we've drawn down $17,500 from that reserve. I don't think we should be drawing down, and it's not a lot of money, to be quite truthful, $8,000. I just think that $8,000 would go to some other project that we could use in the village of Cardinal. So I would, on that basis, I will support the first two, but not the third item. That's all, Mr. Mayor, I have.
So, well, are you asking, are you putting forward an amendment that sentence three be removed?
Actually, that would be what I would recommend.
Then you'll need a seconder.
I would.
To remove item three, or clause, I'm gonna call it sentence three. Counselor Cameron looking for a seconder, which is that the purchase be funded from the Cardinal Hydro Reserve until that would disappear from the recommendation. Okay, so Counselor Dillabaw seconds that recommendation. Now, just on the question, we're gonna debate just the amendment. Comments for or against the concept of purchasing, funding the purchase from the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund? For or against, Counselor Hunter?
Right for, take it from, because I don't really see the purchasing.
So you're voting against the amendment?
The purchasing of parking lot here, that I'm not even sure if we should be purchasing. Why, I know there's a parking, trouble with parking for the houses and stuff there. But lots of people that own the houses, whether they have trouble with parking. We don't buy land to let people park their cars on anyplace else for the township. And we're gonna have a cost here. We buy this parking lot, we're gonna have to plow it, we're gonna have to maintain it. First thing, it's gonna need grating and stuff on it, it's gonna be money spent to bring it up to safety standards.
It's all paid.
It's paid, Lon.
Yeah.
But there is, as the CIO has mentioned, there is a potentiality here to, you know, there's 12 spots, we'll sell the spots for $25 a month for September to April. On a first-come, first-served basis, you got a place to put your car. I know where there's two trailers that could go there tomorrow. If we made parking on the sidewalks illegal in Cardinal, they wouldn't be able to park where they're parked today. But anyway, that's a different issue. So I just want comments about whether the purchase should be coming from the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund. Counselor Hunter votes against removing that. Does anyone speak in favor of removing that clause? Nobody move?
I do, of course.
Yes, you do. Counselor Dillabaw does. Anybody else? Okay, so I'm about to call a question on the amendment, whether the amendment removes that clause or not. So, those in favor of removing that clause signify. One, removing the clause, which way are you voting?
Oh, I am, I'm sorry, yes, sorry, sorry.
One, two, three, who else is voting here? Nobody. Okay, those in favor of leaving the clause in? It's four, okay, so the amendment fails three to four. Now, we've got the recommendation in its entirety as it's written on the page. Further discussion on the recommendation as it's written on the page, no discussion. Looking for a mover and a seconder. Nobody moving? Count, well, Mr. Packwood is moving, he needs a seconder. Does he have a seconder? Okay, so Mr. Bradley seconds. So I have a mover and a seconder for the recommendation as it's written on the page. Further discussion, if any? Okay, are you jumping in?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the only reason we're buying this is so it doesn't get a fence put around it.
That's one.
Yep, that was the primary.
Is that really the only, like, that's...
Primary motivation.
We can recognize that it may have some use if we keep it open and other things, but really, we're buying a piece of property that... But, but really, we're buying a piece of property that, that, that's a parking lot that, that can't be developed for commercial, that can't be developed for residential, and that, that we, if it's a piece of parkland somewhere else, we would be trying to get somebody else to take it off our hands.
Can I jump in here? Because I think there's a narrow, an incorrect understanding there. I mean, we're, if we buy it, we become the owner. If we choose to rezonate from a parking lot to re, to residential lots, assuming that it's big enough, we can do that. It was residential at one point, had an apartment building on it.
It's, it's undersized according to our current standards, current standards. But it's an existing lot of record, and typically, in an existing lot of record, you find a way to make something fit if you want something on that. Yeah, I had not thought of developing that parcel, but was that, that, that option exists. My concern was purely.
Oh, yeah.
The appearance of, and, and Greenian was very clear that that was their.
They do not want the liability.
Well, and it was.
That's right.
That's all saying.
And that it was their pro, their process always to sense property that they own. For me, it was just a sense, that's all.
Yeah. Okay, further discussion before I call a question on the recommendation in front of us.
If you recall the question, Mr. Mayor, do we have a recorded vote please?
Oh, my goodness, I've got to write all these names down. Counselor Dilabah, how do you vote? No? Counselor Cameron, how do you vote?
That would be nay.
I'll leave myself to the last. Deputy Mayor Deschamp, how do you vote?
Nay.
Counselor Hunter, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Packwood, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Robertson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sale votes yes.
Actually, Mr. Bradley is not in this.
Yeah, they vote.
They vote even though he's not on this committee? Or, I'm sorry, he is on this committee. I'm sorry, yes, but, Mr. Robertson, or Mr. Packwood.
Now, I'm going to tally the vote.
Hold on.
One.
Hold on.
Two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Hold on, hold on. We only have seven people on our committee though, right? That this is going through? Not eight?
Now, we've got a point of order here.
So, we're on admin finance. I will call that, we're on an admin finance.
Yes.
And so, the people on admin finance committee should be the ones voting if it's an admin finance committee.
So, we've got to change the vote?
It doesn't change the motion, but it means that Mr. Packwood probably should not be voting on it, which takes out a ye. But the motion.
Okay, so, but, but I have to go back because Mr. Packwood moved.
Oh, right.
So, so now, so now I need a new mover. Sorry, Mr. Packwood. Two meetings in one. Okay, so, Mr. Packwood did, did not move. I'm back to square one on the point of order that's been raised. So, now I'm back to, does the recommendation have a mover? Must have a mover. There was four votes in favor. Mr. Packwood has only one. Mr. Bradley, Mr. Robertson, did you move it?
Yep.
That's called coercion, but it works.
I voted yes, so.
Okay, so Robertson moved, Bradley seconding. And so now the vote, I've got to stake out Mr. Packwood. And now the vote comes down to four against, three in favor, four against. So, the motion fails.
And it did anyway. On a tie, it failed.
Yeah, it failed on a tie, yes. So, we're back where we started. Okay. Well, what can I say? We'll deal with, I don't know how we deal with that.
If it was financed from a different source?
Absolutely. I would solve the problem, that would solve the problem.
No, no, that's not the way the discussion went at all. The source of the financing was not the issue. The source of the financing was not the issue.
That vote was just for the purchase or not purchase.
That's correct.
And in a way, I'll go, I seconded his motion. I wanted a discussion.
On what?
On his earlier motion. Okay, if we don't have a secondary, the motion fails, we don't discuss it. So, the point is, I wanted to make sure we had a discussion. But this little piece of property, I mean, we're going to own it forever with probably nothing on it. If we bought it, we're not going to buy it.
Why aren't?
Because we just voted yes buying it, so can we move?
Okay. Okay. So, now we're at 7H on the agenda. We're about halfway through. Do you want to, raise your hand if you're in favor of a five-minute break? Nobody's in favor of the break. Okay, Counselor Cameron takes over from here and then that the Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities portion of the meeting. Counselor Cameron, you have the vote to chair.
Meeting is called of order. Now, just a, just a point of order is, is Mr. Robertson is.
We're not members of this.
You're not members of this committee, so they will not be voting in, in this. Okay, but you're certainly welcome to stay if you would like to take in our show. First item that we're going to discuss is the operation, operational efficiencies measure, environmental services. And I believe Mr. Shaw is going to speak to this. And you do have a briefing note, this is an information only I.
Through the chair. And after to reduce the cost of communication to increase reliability, as it's a terminator Bell service. Basically, we were with Bell just because of the situ, or where the plan is situated, the wastewater treatment plant. That's, Bell was pretty much the only signal we'd get. Staff picked up a, a web boost cellular phone signal amplifier and adapted it to an original or existing system. So, we bought the, the unit itself. There was an old system and it never worked, but they managed to wire it in through the transponders throughout the building and increased our signal from oftentimes zero to two, three to four bars out of five on the teller system. It basically will reduce the costs of 1582 per month per phone for annual savings of about $450 a year.
450?
Oh, sorry, 950. 950.
Good, good savings, thank you. Any discussion around the table?
Yes, my question is, do you, through the chair, do you get the same reliability?
Much better, much better.
Oh, you do?
Oh, yes. Yeah, the, the signal strength has increased three, three, four times probably through the tellers.
One curiosity question. Do you, do you, with that one, when you're, when you go to the tellers, are you, is there an issue of picking up American Tower through roaming or?
We get roaming, but we shut it off, so.
So, so it is shut off?
Yeah, we shut, we don't, yeah, we just, on our phone, we just shut it off.
And no other, no other, that's the, the, the actual and only phone line for, for service there? Is, is this one we're talking about?
Tellers.
I'm just more wor, yeah, I'm more worried about the 911 and picking up an American 911 call.
I think Bell's still on the, on the regular line, on the landline.
Okay.
I believe so.
Good. Good. Any, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to 7G, another information item regarding the QMS third-party audit report. I believe that Mr. Shaw is going to address this again. We do have the briefing note in front of us. Mr. Shaw, any highlights?
Through the chair. Basically, this audit is a, on a three, three audit cycle. This audit was basically a phone audit where the auditor sends an ask request for information, different data and so forth and with our QMS project or process. The auditor goes through, there was no non-compliances found. There's two OFIs. Basically, one was to do with subverting in the policy. In the policy statement. It went from Edwardsburg Cardinal Environmental Services on behalf of the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal. It's an organization that takes pride and care in the duties it performs. To this end, is committed to supplying, they wanted to add clean, safe, reliable and consistent drinking water supply while maintaining strict adherence to regulatory requirements. We strive to accomplish these goals through implementation, maintenance and continual improvement of QMS, including policies, procedures, communication, due diligence and appropriate contingency emergency responses, all within a safe working environment. Basically, it was just to add the one word, clean. So, that's been done. Will be updated in the procedures.
Good, good. I, I, I do like the, I do like the paper we have. Any questions? Concerns?
So, it's a change of policy statement to add the word clean, does that come before counsel?
I believe so, but it won't be till September, September yet.
Okay, so it just goes on on the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Shaw, I'm going to move on. 7H is the Cardinal Water Pollution Control Plant MECP Inspection Report. And Mr. Shaw, are you speaking to this again?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's 7K, you're correct.
So, on, on January 7th, we had an inspection at the Cardinal Wastewater Treatment Plant by our Inspector Dan White. Basically, he went through all the documentation, our data and training and so forth. And basically, come out with no non-compliances. We did come back with one summary of recommendation, the best practice issued. And it was basically that we didn't have a contingency plan for sludge disposal. We tip, we do it through Third High Farms, which is now Terra Pure, was bought out by Terra Pure. We don't have, I don't believe, a contract with them to, to remove the sludge. It's just something that they've done on an annual basis, so the Ministry of Environment put it in as a best practice to come up with a contingency plan, should Terra Pure not be able to take our sludge due to wet conditions or, or such things like that, I guess. But we have in the past, this year, they've, they weren't able to come because of the backlog of taking sludge. But they do have a process, it's called the list that process in their Iroquois plant where they can actually process some of it there. And they've taken three or four loads and kept us in good shape. So, we're looking like we're in good shape until the fall, when they would take the rest of them.
And the, and the last sentence of that paragraph is staff is working on updating the biosolids contingency line.
That's correct.
That's just ongoing.
Yeah, and one of the things that was mentioned was possibly of the sludge going to Ottawa, Ottawa to the Pickard Plant. I've talked with the manager there, went through email and inquired about taking sludge in an emergency situation. And he replied in an email that basically they could. And asked if we needed a formal agreement of sorts. And I said that would be beneficial if they get a formal agreement, but I haven't heard back from him, so I'll be following up with it.
And I guess the question I would have to that is how are we going to get there?
Yeah, you need to, there's different carriers, Terra Pure or Third High Farms could be one of them.
Okay, so we'd have to contract with them.
Yeah, we, we would have to go through another carrier. And that would probably be part of the contingency. We'd look at different carriers, AID Law maybe would be one of those type of carriers that could take that material, so. Ideally.
I'll go here first.
Would it be wise to get a contract with three?
Terra Pure.
Chair, it sounds good.
Through the chair, yeah. Ideally, that would be the, but I think it's like six figures. We, we can definitely see what.
Then we're covered, we don't have to worry. We've got a contract with them, right?
I, I'm assuming that, I can't say what the ministry will do, but I would assume that would be so.
That we are doing our due diligence, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Through the chair. Are there other, or were there other options other than the Ottawa option considered? Are there other spreaders like Terra Pure?
I went through as much as I could find in Terra Pure or Third High Farms, when it was Third High Farms, almost go as far as Toronto and north and south and to the Quebec border. I did look at another method. There's a company up in Renfrew that, that uses, I can't think of the name of it. It's a, basically a bag, a desludging bag. And they will, they can send trucks in, they put a polymer in, inject it in the bag. I think it Perth, Perth or, yeah, Perth uses that system. And it dewateres the sludge and over a year, the sludge decomposes and kills the pathogens inside. And it can be, you know, pelletized or used as fertilizer, fertilizer or soil, basically. There is a problem with that is that we would need environmental approval from the ministry for that. So, we would have to go, because it's moving sludge from one area to another and it's a different process. So, you know, it could have been set up possibly at the lagoons. And it's a mobile dewatering unit. So, they bring out these bags and the sludge is pushed, like I said, with a polymer to thicken it. And it's dewatered over a year or so. There's a few places around, I think Alexandria, I believe, used it to dewater their lagoon sludge. And with success. So, there is some potential for that type of, of thing as well. There, there's also a potential with that type of technology, if it, if it all worked out, we could get approval. You could possibly get some, some revenue from desludging for other people. The only problem with it that I would see is, is disposing of the composted material afterward. Where would we put that? That's the, that's one of the things. But, but it's something looking, worth looking into. Bishop Water in Renfrew is someone that does that type of thing.
In our compost, of course. Any other, any other, any other questions? Harry, now I'm going to move on. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Shaw. We're now at 7L, which is the traffic volume and speed counters. First coming, those two of them, actually. This, the first one, 7L is for Center Street here in Spinserville. And Mr. Brad, are you going to speak to this or?
I'm, we're the chair, I'll defer to our own super.
Certainly. So, Mr. Guest?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two reports in front of you tonight on some issues that came up through residents about speeding. And they, they both pretty much showed the same information in both sites, one being Center Street, the other being New Xford, kind of road two. We have analyzed it, provided the reports that come from our, from our traffic counters. And we will be, if they haven't already, move forward to the OPP because there are some issues there.
Now, is that for both or is that just for the Center Street?
That would, I, I sort of did both in one, Mr. Chair.
So, both, both are done in one?
Yeah.
Questions, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, through the chair. Several 15 kilometer an hour readings in there. I'm just looking at the actual numbers for the data. The, the 15 kilometers are obviously somebody pulling out of their driveway and reaching a speed as, as they, they pull out. But how much does that 15 kilometers skew the data if, if I pull in and out of my driveway five times or six times in a day?
Would have some effect on it, but we are using, we are using the, like your, we're taking the high and low out.
So, we're throwing out the 108, 103 and we're, and we're throwing out all of those 15s? Because I don't, I mean, if all the, if some of the 15s stay in, I mean, I really think that the number is thrown off a lot. I felt that way about the Highway 21 in Cardinal as well. But, I mean, I'm not a data guy, but it only stands to reason somebody pulling out of their driveway isn't why we're doing a speeding study. And it's not really representative of the average, the average speed going by those, where that speed monitor is.
And, and the higher, the higher percentage through, through, through the chair, the higher percentage is, is the cars that are, are drive-throughs. Like they're, they're going from once, one, the, the, one end of the subject section to the other.
Sure.
So, so you're, you may get it pulled down a bit, but I don't know, does it take it all in, Dave? I, 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 I just know some of them out and I want to get hearing the percentile.
Yeah, they just struggle at like reading, you know, 63 point, something as, as the total. But if it's counting all of the 15s versus the, the two that are at 100, that's kind of struggle with. But if it's counting all of the fifteens versus the two that are at one hundred, that's kind of struggle with the person pulling in and out. I know that's the program and that's the way the data gets calculated. I'm just.
Yeah, so through, through the chair, even if you look at that bin count, there were seventy-nine.
Excuse me, excuse me. Sorry, can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No.
Just a second, I'll turn up the volume. There you go. If you, if you're looking at the summary report for New Exford. So the report period is the thirty-first of May to June second. See on your right hand side, your counts by speed bin.
Count by speed bin, yes.
So you're looking at it seventy-nine and your total counts is almost eight thousand. So it plays very minimal impact in your, in your final data counts.
Yep. But it doesn't change the numbers in the bins?
Through the chair.
No, it doesn't change the numbers in bins because that's what the numbers are, right? There were seventy-nine vehicles that traveled between ten to fifteen.
Fair, through the chair, fair enough. But, you know, we're saying, you know, that, and I don't think it's reasonable to think that people are driving thirty-five kilometers an hour or less through New Exford upon the Highway Two unless they're pulling out of their driveway. And so that's two hundred of all of those. Well, that may be a small segment. It's still more than double the amount of people that are going eighty and over. So the fact that they're even in there, and if they're taking out those eighty and over with that two hundred, it's skewing it right into the sixty kilometer an hour zone. And I, I struggle with that a little bit. Because the people that are doing seventy and over are not the people who are, who are, are pulling out of their driveway. They're the people that are continuing, continuing along.
So through the chair, is the feeling that it should be filtered with an X amount of kilometer speed before it gets registered?
Excuse me. So through the chair, I mean, I think it's a vacuous argument. Because it, the numbers in the bins are the actual vehicles that are speeding at those rates, right? What we're interested in is the speeders. We don't care about the fifteen mile an hour guys. So the speeders, and I'm looking for this, the statistics summary report for New Exford, County Road Two eastbound, speed limit is fifty, the vehicle count is seven thousand nine fifty-five. What is the eighty-five percent percentile speed on that?
And this is the period thirty-first through the, yeah, thirty-first through the.
June.
Yeah, so what's the eighty-fifth percentile? We get that, we get that number from the Center Street, but we don't seem to get it from this report.
Please, well, that's a good point, right?
So through the chair, the eighty-fifth percentile speed for that period would be sixty-three.
Sixty-three?
Sixty-three.
All right. So sixty, so eighty-five vehicle, eighty-five percent of the vehicles are traveling sixty-three or lower.
Correct.
Right? Eighty-five, so that's what interests us. Now, that means that, that means that sixty-three, what's that? Seventy, or forty, thirty-seven percent of the vehicles are traveling more than sixty-three. No, no, the eighty-five. Fifteen percent of the vehicles are traveling more than that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so now that's our issue, is it not?
Your issue typically is five to fifteen percent of the.
Traffic.
Of the traffic.
Is speeders. And what's our highest speed?
Looks like it's close between one-ten and one-fifteen in that bin.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was one, there was one speeder that was over a hundred and ten.
Yeah, the next one we had seven. And eastbound is tame for versus westbound. It might, it might have been. Westbound is, it's not more aggressive than speeding here. Because you'll see your, your speeds are, you get up into sixty-five, and you're eighty-fifth percentile. So, so we're getting past that grace of ten kilometers an hour.
Yes.
And, and therefore, the issue becomes more prevalent westbound.
And again, so just picking up upon that, with, with the two hundred cars that I were talking about possibly skewing that data, that may make an even bigger impact in that thirteen kilometers an hour that you're talking about.
Through, through the chair, I really, I really don't see that as, as being that impactful on whether there's, there's a speeding issue or there's not a speeding issue.
Just on the average speed that they're speeding at.
Right.
But these are not average speeds, these are actuals.
These are actuals, but they're average. It's the average number.
I'm talking about the average that's coming out, though.
Yeah.
So, so Mr. Chair, may I? These reports, they come out, they give us information. We do our best to do the analysis on it. This is why we send them to the OPP who has, has people that do this every day. And, and we can put the emphasis on the fact that we are above the average that we would expect to see in a fifty on both, on both reports.
We have a problem.
So, I wouldn't say we have a problem. We now have to come up with ways to amend those problems. Either curtail the problems or amend them somehow. And one of the ways that Dave and I have spoken about is, is going out westbound here on County Road Two, which is the higher offender as well, is to take and graduate the speed. So, so instead of going from fifty right to eighty that you can see right ahead of you, and I do it every time myself. I say, okay, it's eighty, here I go, right? Go to sixty until the next rise where they, the eighty can't be seen. And then enforcement on top of that. So that's why we take these reports and send them off to not only the counties, but also the OPP.
Now, we're talking New Exford, County.
I'm talking, maybe I've confused things, Mr. Chair, but I put both together because they're very, very similar.
Because I do know that in New Exford, it goes from either eighty to sixty to fifty or vice versa, coming from Prescott. Because there is, because there is a sixty in there.
Yes, there is. And that's, that's the graduated I'm talking about for here in Spencerville. So there's solutions, and we've just got to keep these moving forward, Mr. Chair.
And what do the OPP do with these?
They, they will take and do their analysis and, and hopefully provide, see the need to provide more enforcement there.
I want to go to Counselor Hunter first, Deputy Mayor.
I just, we can talk, right? Average is all we want, want here, but I don't think the average is important.
We've got a speeding.
But the, I think it's important about these reports when they're sent to the OPP is they look in a two-day period there. They're looking, I'm just looking at one here from New Exford, between seventy and seventy, by kilometers, three hundred and seventy-three. If I'm an OPP officer, I shouldn't say, well, geez, because I want to fill up my ticket. I can go and search there. There's three hundred and seventy-three in twenty-four hours, and you can sit there. And I can pretty well guarantee you if you hand out, if they hand out a hundred and fifty tickets there in two days' time, those percentiles are going to take a drastic drop for a while because the work gets out in a hurry. I, I think it's a good report, but I think, I don't think we need to worry about the percentile. We need to worry about that two hundred or two hundred and fifty or three hundred, whatever it is. And really, we pay big money for the OPP to enforce this. They need to be there and enforce it.
Deputy Mayor?
And they are. They're out there right now.
Deputy Mayor?
Just last follow-up through the chair. So when you hand over this, it'll be this exact report, not a summation of this report or anything else. They'll get the whole, like the whole document that we're seeing as well?
And even more, Dave.
And even more. So they'll be able to throw it out and put it into their own system and do whatever number of magic they want to do. Good, awesome, thank you.
There's a problem right now. When you're coming out of Exford, you're coming east. When you come up to the construction of the new railroad overpass, they've got you down to sixty miles an hour because it's a construction zone. But they've never covered up the eighty. Somebody should put a bag over the eighty.
The sixties are there for when the, when the traffic lights go in. And they should be bagged right now. I mentioned it to the contractor today. But it is still eighty through there until the traffic lights go. So it'll be switched in, I think, tomorrow, so.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Brad?
All right, so a mitigation measure, the signs that we use to gather this data have the flashing light if I'm over the limit. Does that not, over a period of time, tend to slow the traffic down?
Do you, Mr. Chair, I've, I've noticed it the opposite way. It's sort of slowed things down in the beginning, if I looked at the data, the way I look at it. And, and then all of a sudden, we saw a rise at the tail end of the period. And, and it just, at least in the New Exford data, the, the Spencerville Center Street data, I'm not so sure about. But I, I did notice that the tail end of these reports, I felt the numbers went up. And, and for instance, sixty-eight in the period at July first to July seventh is your, is your eighty-fifth percentile. People, people, oh yeah, there's that damn sign again, you know, and, and they forget about it. So, so we've.
Did you get the first hour, didn't you, did you get a ticket?
Yeah, so, so I, I think it's the opposite way, Mr. Mayor. And, and the, I think that the enforcement now has to come into play. And some, maybe other methods. See, we're not the road authority on, on these streets either. So we have to work with the county, so on both, both reports.
So again, through the chair. Now, the two reports are drastically different in their presentation and their formatting. Is it, is it different machines or is it just that you pulled a different report?
The, the Center Street report was pulled off of our new system. We have two new counters that you'll see up here on Venice Beach.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the new system. It has many different ways to print things out, more flexible than, than our old system. And the New Exford one is our, is our old counters. And they're, you got to go in and do a program on a computer, put a stick in, take it out, and hopefully get the report you want. So, and they're limited to the number of reports you can get. So, so there's a efficiency and modernization too, by the way. Sorry, I have to put that in there.
Thank you, good job, Mr. Guest. I do appreciate that. Good, 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 thank you. Okay, well, moving on, and we now are at seven N. And that's the Johnstown Servicing Survey Results. And there is a recommendation attached to the briefing note, and you will have a chance to read it. So I will be looking for a mover and a secondary for the recommendation. Mr. Packwood with moving, and second, Deputy Mayor DeChambeau. And the recommendation reads that the township does not proceed with a municipal class environmental study to determine the feasibility of bringing municipal servicing to the Johnstown area, and that staff contact the residents within the survey area by mail and inform them of the service, the survey results, and decision. Any questions? Concerns? Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, the number responding, you know, is fifty-three percent doesn't meet the threshold that we had set out. And the eighty-one percent obviously said no to, to the spending of it. In my discussion with, with several people, you know, there were, there were a lot of misconceptions and even, quite frankly, one family member. And we had a rather interesting discussion over, over the reason, you know, for the study. And, and they're, they really aren't aware of, of the intricacies of, of who pays for what and why, why they pay for it. While it may have been indicated there, it didn't seem like anyone had done any research as to why or for that. So remember early on in the process that Counselor Dilibah had wanted to do some, you know, like public meetings and more awareness style versus what we ended up, up doing. And, well, this result seems pretty conclusive to me, that they're not interested in what we proposed through the, through the survey. I think for myself, on a, on a long-term moving forward goal, I don't, I'm not convinced that, 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 at least from what I heard when I knocked doors, that this number is accurate in compared, in comparison to, to what people are asking for. So, I don't know. Maybe going forward over the next several years, if we can continue to work towards better awareness or, or, you know, working with the residents to, I know this is going to fail, and it should with these numbers, obviously. But, but maybe spending a little more time and trying a different approach might be, might be worth it.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm going to, I mean, well, we've got to deal with what we've got in front of us. Although I'm not, I'm not at all convinced that this is a dead issue. I'm looking at the recommendation and does not proceed with the municipal class environmental study to determine the feasibility of bringing municipal service to the Johnstown area. And that staff contact the residents within the survey area by mail to inform them of the survey results and the decision. I guess we have to do that. But I, I, I've, I've been approached by quite a few people here on this study. And I think what the Deputy Mayor has just said is really the issue of it. People do not understand the complexities here. And while I'm prepared to accept these results for now and move on, I think that this issue has to be looked at again within this term of council. And I think I'm prepared to let four or five months go by, but I think we got to take another kick at this cat some way or another. So I'm just going to say that for now and let it go at that. And I'm not just too sure what the second approach is going to be. But I think from my point of view, one of the things that I want to really look closely at is can we find another way of financing the survey rather than have the actual two-hundred and twenty-four houses in the survey area? Is there another way? Are we allowed, is there any flexibility in the legislation that would allow us to find another way? Now, the problem with that approach is that if we do do the study and the survey of the, and the survey results indicate that something has to be done, we then have a tiger by the tail, and that worries me. Just going to let it go at that for now, but I don't think this is a dead issue. Think it's a, I think it has the potential to become a real serious issue, but it's not a dead issue. That's all I'm going to say for now. All support to our recommendation.
Mr. Dilibah, did you, Counselor Dilibah, did you have?
I just, yeah, I had a lot of input from residents. And it was the seven hundred dollars. And it was hard to explain to them that we have to pay for environmental assessment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think you would have saw the numbers first, I, I think it would have been higher, and you would have had more of a yes if that's a number. So, and I agree, I hope you don't leave this dead. I'd like to take another kick in the can. I don't know why, maybe it is, we should have a little bit of, a few meetings, town hall meetings over it. And can we do something with that seven hundred bucks somehow? And I'll leave that to you.
Okay. Mr. Packwood?
This thing about the number of responses, the number of yes, that would pretty well tell us where all the problems are in that area. All right, twenty-six yes.
It will at least tell us where the old systems are.
That's right, exactly. That's right, exactly.
Any other discussions? Okay, we have a mover, we have a seconder, the recommendation is in front of you. I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
That's carried. Thank you.
And if I may, through the chair, that notice to the residents will go up tomorrow, because we had initially said that we would release these results on the nineteenth, of course, it is on the nineteenth. So, normally we wait for the council to...
Thank you, Secretary.
All aye.
Thank you, Secretary. All right, we're moving on to seven O, which is the water service to vacant lot on Dundas Street. And I believe this lot has been purchased by a charity, Habitat for Humanity, and I will let... is our CIO going to speak to this?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair. So we were directed to, this is a vacant lot that we had, the house had burned, and the municipality ended up passing the vacant lot back in after a failed tax sale process, one bit on it. And we put it out tender, and the successful bidder was Habitat for Humanity. And in preparing, because they would like to move ahead with the building right away, so in preparing for that, getting our servicing in, making sure that everything was in order, we discovered that there is a problem with the servicing there, and it's going to cost, we have estimated it just under nine thousand dollars to realign the water service to make sure that it's proper. And because it's a charitable organization buying the land, it's my recommendation that the municipality pick up the cost of doing that. You know, there had been some discussion in the last council of actually donating the lot, so we at least got our costs back on that, and I think this acceptance of the donation is the right thing to do in this case.
Yes, thank you. And the recommendation reads that committee recommends to council that the cost to provide water service to part lot two ninety, plan twenty-five, Dundas Street, be funded partly from the sale of the property and the remainder from the current water operating budget. Any questions, concerns, or conversation? Deputy Mayor?
For the original twenty-one hundred, that was a mover, what they had paid for, totally fine with, you know, with that being put in, it offsets, it was above whatever the cost of the lot was, but for the remaining sixty-seven, sixty, being taxpayer dollars to donate those dollars to a charity, I think if it's us donating taxpayer dollars, I would rather have my dollars donated by myself than council. So I would be against the sixty-seven, sixty.
Any other questions? Okay, that being heard, I'm sorry, I'm out of CIO, we get a mover and seconder?
I don't.
Okay, I would be looking for a mover and seconder for the recommendation. Mr. Packwood is the mover, seconder?
No seconder?
All seconders? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, second's the recommendation. We have a mover and a seconder. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, if any? One, two. Mr. Dillabon? I didn't get here.
I'm sorry. I'm going to choose.
Okay, thank you. So it's moved, it's carried. Thank you.
Was that an error that the committee at the top is trying to finance and have been on?
Yes. That's called using a template and forgetting to change that.
Okay. I didn't want to mess up on the vote.
And the thing is, the CIO had mentioned this to me earlier, quite earlier, actually. This was a test, and you did pass.
Oh, good.
Okay, that is carried, thank you. Okay, we move on now to seven P, and this is our last item of the week on the actual information items. And this is the Enbridge third-party, Enbridge Pipelines Third Party Request to Use R O W, and...
Move to accept the recommendation.
And there is a recommendation with it, yes. Thank you. So I have a seconder, Mr. Dillabon, Counselor Dillabon, thank you. The recommendation reads that committee recommends that council approve the use agreement with Enbridge Pipelines to authorize staff to execute. Do we have any discussion? I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is carried. And I believe now we have council inquiries and notice of motions. Deputy Mayor?
An inquiry about the notice on the highway too close to the mayor's, or the mayor's residences, that there have been since February several guardrails in a state of damaged repair. They, there has been an attempt to clean up those guardrails, but a long section of them appears to be, have been removed. That was where the accidents actually happened. I'm wondering if there is a plan to have those replaced, and the damage that's still at the top of, I don't know which the name of the hill is, if that's, you know, if there's any plan for that, if we can find out whether those guardrails will actually be replaced.
My understanding is that the ones on the north side are not being replaced because the ditch is pretty much leveler.
That's where the original damage...
Yep. Car's coming over the curve too fast and losing control and taking out the railing. Now they're just gonna let them kill themselves in the ditch.
And so... That'll sound very unvideo.
Yeah, not so good, no.
No, probably not. So, to further that then, while we're talking about that, so is there a plan to repair the one on the south side? And is it the same reason that the ones on the north side haven't been repaired, that the machine hasn't been available or isn't around to do the repair?
Yeah, no, my understanding was that they seem to do this on a rotational basis, and the amount of time that had been allocated was completely taken up on the north side of the road. My understanding is that they either ran out of time, or they ran out of material to fix the one on the south lane, which is the eastbound lane, and that they will be back, but I don't have a timeframe for when they'll be back to finish, to complete that repair. There will be repair.
The north side or the south side?
The south side.
And the north side stays as is?
The guardrail that's been removed on the north side will stay removed.
Anything else?
I have one.
Go ahead.
My usual monthly question. How's your bylaw for no parking coming along for twenty-one?
The council, the county council doesn't meet again till September, so I expect to see it in September. I know it was referred to at the last, that the report would be ready for September.
This would be a time-consuming of large areas to look after.
Yeah, it's taken while.
Anything else? I just have a couple quick ones for staff. Walker Street, I understand now that the contractor has finished doing Walker Street, and I believe we were going to send out letters asking the residents to cut the weeds, or cut the area that was reseeded. Have those letters gone out yet?
No, we've been waiting for the Director of Operations to return to make sure that the contract has indeed been fulfilled. We just wanted to double check on that.
Okay, it's just some of the weeds are getting somewhat high now. And the other question I have, some time ago, I spoke with the Director of Operations regarding the Adelaide Street Pumping Station. There was some additional work to be done in there. Now, has that work been done?
Through the chair, no. That work has not been completed yet. That will be scheduled in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll certainly move along, and the next item is the mayor's report.
So just very quickly, on Wednesday, August the fourteenth, this Wednesday, at five o'clock, this Friends for Life Bike Rally will be coming to Grenville Park, I think I mentioned that earlier, and the group, I think I mentioned what the group was all about, trying to look to see if I had the little briefing note here.
Just AIDS awareness, certainly.
Yeah, just AIDS awareness. Critical life-saving enriching care for more than twenty-nine hundred people living with or impacted by HIV/AIDS every year, so it's a fundraiser. So they wanted the mayor there on day four, and I'll be there, council members are welcome to attend. Think I mentioned the fact, I'd like to try to raise a hundred dollars for them if I could, depending on how many of us are there. Next item, Rio St. Lawrence Annual General Meeting, this Friday, August the sixteenth, at the Port Meeting Room, starts at eleven o'clock. The annual general meeting will last until about one, maybe a little after, and then Rio St. Lawrence will host the luncheon at the Bridgeview following the Rio St. Lawrence Annual General Meeting. If you're planning to attend, should kind of phone Rio St. Lawrence or myself and let me know, because I'd kind of like to get an idea of numbers prior to the luncheon.
I'm planning on being there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll mark you down. And then AMO delegations, we have one that I know of, and that's on Tuesday, August the twentieth, at eight fifty in the morning with Minister Hardiman concerning the sale of Landbank Land to farmers, and I think the intent is that we're just going to push the sale of the lands that are already leased, those parcels that are already being leased, find a way to get them into the hands of the farmers. And I think we're also looking for a delegation with the Minister of Infrastructure, but I don't think that's turned down, was it?
It was turned down today.
It was turned down today?
Yeah.
All right, so we just have the one, plus the county ones, be a number of those. All right, just a reminder that the Port Meeting will be on Wednesday, August the twenty-first. We'll get back from AMO about noon or two o'clock that day, and the Port Meeting will be at six thirty that night. And just another item, at the last council meeting, I think I mentioned the fact that I had had conversations with the Secretary of the Lake Ontario St. Lawrence River Control Board concerning some public meetings, trying to get some public meetings organized later in the fall. And I think I had indicated at that report that the Secretary of the Control Board was quite prepared to meet with the mayors, the CAOs, representatives from the Conservation Authorities sometime in September, and I think we had roughly established a date. That's what I reported. Okay, now I'm updating that report, and the update goes like this. MP Barrett was able to arrange a meeting with the co-chairs of the International Joint Commission. So the International Joint Commission is the body that rides on top of the various control boards, there's about four control boards all across Canada. The International Joint Commission, three Canadians and three Americans, all just recently appointed in May, and two co-chairs, an American co-chair and a Canadian co-chair. So MP Barrett was able to arrange that meeting with myself as warden, MP P Clark and himself. On Tuesday, July the thirtieth, the meeting took place at four o'clock in his office in Brockville. Now, as a result of that meeting, the IJC, the International Joint Commission, the two co-chairs, have asked the Control Board to stand down from holding any public meetings. And the IJC itself, the two co-chairs and other members of the Joint Commission will host the meeting with the mayors, and I'm not too sure who else is going to be involved, on August the twenty-seventh. They seem to be pretty much married to that August the twenty-seventh date. Now, I haven't heard anything more about that meeting since July the thirtieth, except that my conversation with the Secretary of the Control Board says that he's pretty sure that it's a go. So that's sort of put you in the picture to know that the International Joint Commission, the two co-chairs, perhaps other members of the board of the commission, will meet with at least the mayors on August the twenty-seventh. And by the way, the whole purpose of the meeting that MP Barrett hosted and MP P Clark attended was to explain to the International Joint Commission how important it is that they get out into the public and tell their story. So the whole question of public meetings and open houses is what is behind this. And the purpose of the meeting on August the twenty-seventh will certainly be to get them to do more of a public outreach to our residents and our taxpayers along the riverfront. So that puts you in the picture on that one. Now, just a couple of good news things. On Saturday, I was asked to attend the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Spencerville Home Hardware. Mike Mennotan and his crew presented them with a little certificate and wished them good luck. On Friday, August the ninth, I attended the grand reopening at the Spencerville Legion, along with MP P Clark and MP Barrett, and wished them well in their reopening, have done quite a job renovating the Legion and making it look much cleaner. Also on Friday night, I was asked to attend the tenth year anniversary for the Art Scene, which I did, and we had a nice certificate made up congratulating them on ten years in business, and wishing them well for the next ten years, but they announced that they're closing on August the twenty-fifth, so it's kind of sad to see Art Scene closing. And then the last thing, I just wanted to report that the Drinking Water Quality Management System Review, if I got it right, took place this morning at the sewage treatment plant, and we examined all fourteen issues that are to be examined during the review. There were no non-compliance issues, and I can report that the township is currently in compliance with the new system, which will be coming into effect in December of 2019, and thanks to a very proactive staff, that we are completely compliant in both the old system and the new system, with just a number of small, little changes being required in the documentation. So that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We now move on to number ten, which is question period. And I don't believe there's any questions from the gallery. We do have a closed session meeting, so I think we should take five minutes to clear the chambers, and do we have to...
Make the motion, sir?
Who has the motion to go in?
I do.
Okay, Counselor Hunter, would you read that, please?
Me, myself, second by Deputy Mayor DeChambeau. That the committee of the whole proceed in the closed session at eight fifty-eight PM in order to address a matter pertaining to trade secret, scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which is disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice a significant competitive position for interference in F A with contractual or other negotiations on person, group of persons, or organizations, simply S L C E D C update. acquisition or disposal of land by municipality or local boards, specifically in a closed session dated May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, and July fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. And we are now, uh...
Call the question.
I'm sorry. All, all...
Those in favor?
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's carried.
Closed meeting is now adjourned, and the open meeting of Committee of the Whole is now resumed at nine thirty-four PM.
Thank you very much, arising from Committee of the Whole, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you. And so, arising from Committee of the Whole, I'm going to report as follows. First of all, we're approving the minutes of a closed session held on May the thirteenth, and the minutes of a closed session held on July the fifteenth. Deputy Mayor Deschamps, I think you have that motion?
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor John Hunter, that Committee of the Whole approves the minutes of closed sessions dated May thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you very much, those in favor?
Aye.
Those minutes are adopted as circulated, and then reporting on the third matter that was discussed, which is the matter of the St. Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission. The mayor will brief members of the committee on the meeting of August the seventh. And now the chair is looking for the motion to adjourn.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Cameron, that Committee of the Whole does now adjourn at nine fifty-six PM. Or, or, nine forty-six, sorry, six PM.
Motion's before the chair, those in favor?
Aye.